And I'm going to call this Planning Commission meeting to order October 24th, 2023. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um, will you do roll call first?
Commissioner Ferguson.
Here.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Here.
Commissioner Preston. Commissioner H Wiley.
Here.
Commissioner L Wiley.
Here.
And Chairman McLean.
Here. Thank you. Okay, um, good evening. Um, for all of those of you who wish to speak tonight or think you might wish to speak tonight, we need to swear you in, so if you will stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the whole truth before this commission? If so, say I do. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna start with our first, which is the consent agenda. Did everybody have a chance to look at the minutes?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion for it to pass the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, and we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley.
Yes.
Chairman McLean.
Yes. Consent agenda has been approved. Um, next thing is, um, case number 23-400-15, or short-term rental at 12111 East 50 First Terrace South, um, has been requested to be continued until November 14th.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion that we continue case 23-415 to November 14th.
Thank you. A second?
I second.
And we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Can you, Commissioner H Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley.
Yes.
And Chairman McLean.
Yes. Case number 23-400-15 has been continued to the November 14th Planning Commission meeting.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move that we continue case 23-100-27, rezoning 336 North Hawker Avenue, until the November 14th meeting.
Thank you.
Second.
And we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley.
Yes.
Chairman McLean.
Yes. Case number 23-100-27 has been continued till the November 14th Planning Commission meeting. Okay, public hearings. First case is case, a continued case, number 23-100-23, rezoning of 420 South M291 Highway. Staff.
Okay, this is the, uh, Pipes rezoning, applicant John Carnes. It's an action to rezone, uh, property from C2 General Commercial to I1 Industrial. And again, if you look at the vicinity map, you can see the area we're, um, uh, looking at, just north of Independence Avenue on the west side of 291, uh, a few blocks south of Salisbury. As we, as was just noted, it's owned C2, of course, is surrounded by areas that are zoned, uh, industrial and, um, nearby, um, uh, residential properties on, um, R6 as well as some illegal non-conforming residential properties. And the comprehensive plan, which indicates this whole area was, um, designated as, or has been designated for single-family residential. This was the, here's the picture of the property in question again, to remind you, it was heavily wooded piece, hasn't been developed. Has access there off 291, as you can see that those drives, well, actually the one on the south, which is actually, um, associated with this property, so. So, um, I'm not going to go back through the report from the last time, but we have some additional supplemental information that we put in your, um, packet, and I'll go over that background material and some of the recommendations that we also noted in that supplement. Under background, uh, the code for industrial uses, um, I1 Industrial and I2 Industrial are not defined as planned unit development districts. While the business park designation is a PUD district, it is, it is unlikely, the mixed-use office light assembly and manufacturing uses would be possible for this site. While staff has recommended at times the use of the PU dis, PUD district for uses not allowed in the C2 base, uses have remained with the C2 and C3, uh, commercial zonings. Attempts to use the PUD for an industrial use in the commercial zoning would not be, uh, recommended and would not be in the spirit of the zoning code for use separations. Uh, the I1 industrial zoning is described as a, uh, district primarily intended for, to accommodate low, moderate impact service industrial uses. Given the challenges, the limitations of the utilities on the site, as we talked about last time, uh, the current surrounding industrial, uh, zone uses, staff does not believe the applicant's, uh, request for rezoning this property from C2 to C1 would be detrimental to nearby properties. As such, staff still recommends this zoning request, that it be zoned to, uh, I1 Industrial. So, again, looking at the site, as we've talked about, this is sort of an isolated property along the, on the, along 291. And, um, you can see, um, the relative lack of development along this corridor. Previously, uh, staff, uh, when it made its recommendations, said, um, gave, uh, these three reasons. Uh, the, the driving lot, um, shall be paved in coordinate accordance with, uh, um, city code requirements. The, um, stormwater detention shall be provided in the city's adopted design and construction manual. And three, a plan review must be submitted along with the construction permits, engineering plans, and stormwater calculations, uh, provided to community development. I have a list of five items here that was in your supplemental staff report that you got. Other issues of, um, need and highlighted here are sanitary sewers are currently not available on this site. As we talked about last week, the nearest, um, sewer infrastructure is 300 to 500 feet away. It's relatively shallow in relation to this site. Any possible access would require access through several off-street properties, off-site properties. The city code provides guidance, uh, for use of septic systems, with the Department of Natural Resources making a septic or lagoon system unlikely, if not impossible, for any typical industrial use. Uh, number two, while water is, uh, possible on this site, the closest water supply is over 500 feet away. Connection to water would require off-site access through several private properties. Uh, three, access to the site off M291 is a ride-in, ride-out access only. Any access changes to this site would require MoDOT approval. The site is, uh, unlikely to ever have a full access onto M291, making any typical industrial or commercial use unlikely. Uh, this site is also unlikely to ever have more than one access point. Uh, number four, uh, power service, while possible, will have challenges accessing this site along this portion of the M291 corridor. And number five, uh, this site is currently surrounded to the north, the south, and the west with existing industrial zoned uses. A second lot adjacent to the south property line is currently zoned R6. However, that lot is a non, is non-conforming as it is both, um, R6 and, um, I1 zoning on a single lot. Uh, the residential portion of this lot is unlikely to support residential uses in its current form with this limited access off the unfinished East Mechanic Avenue right-of-way. So, again, um, staff recommends just a standard rezoning to I1, mainly given the limited, uh, utility access and, and the chances of, of more extensive uses on the property.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Uh, Brian, did you guys check with the underground caves there, how far back on that property it goes? Or does it go? Or does anybody know?
I'm, I'm unaware of how far the, where the location of those caves are exactly in relation to this property.
So, we don't know? Okay.
Would the applicant like to come forward and give us any new details you want to give us? And maybe answer, uh, Commissioner Nesbit's question, in case you know.
John Carnes, representative of the applicant Pipes. However, present today here with me is Aaron Day, who's gonna be the purchaser and developer of the property. He sits right over here with his wife and son. And, um, I've read the report, and I think I concur with the city's analysis and recommendation. Um, if there's any additional questions, um, Mr. Day here is available to address those on what his intent is to develop that. And I think at the last meeting, I spoke of that he has a school in which you take, um, classes for CDL training to drive a big 18-wheeler. His classroom's located at Gudgee, near 291. And he took a building there and renovated it and did, I think, a great job. And, uh, but he has to take his students out, and they have to have hands-on experience. And this is what this lot would be, basically driving around cones, being graded, and their ability to maneuver a major vehicle like a 18-wheeler cab. And he's brought a lot of things with him today, so he's prepared. And so, um, and I think that Commissioner Nesbit mentioned about what's undermined over there.
Correct.
Well, I've been looking at that for a long time on different plots there. I did ask the city one time to supply that to me. And all they could supply was what the present occupant of the Old Pixley Caves is, which I think is a fast food frozen thing, and it only went so far from Truman Road. Now, for some reason, I thought I saw a map one time of the whole place. And if I had to bet, I might think it's undermined. But I guess if I'm selling the property, it's not undermined. But, but I believe that there's, um, it's the department, I tried even to the State Department of Natural Resources to get a map. Cause I had some clients in another portion of that area that had sinking and around their homes and everything. So, and that, you know, was dug out in like the early 1900s, you know? So it didn't go to different, the standards in which underground mining is.
Right.
So, that's why I think it's so, you don't know what supports what when you get down there on that property.
Oh, the only thing I was wondering is that, you guys are gonna have to put a water detention there? And I just wanted to know if it's gonna be anywhere getting down close to being too thin?
You mean like our water detention might have a drain in it, you mean?
Right.
I guess the engineers should figure that one out.
When they start digging?
Yeah.
That's the only thing I was wondering about, is that, I mean, I don't know how much dirt is on top of the cave?
I think the design might not have to be that extensive, it will slope down and sort of be a gradual slope to collect the water. That's why I looked at the map there.
Okay. Well, I mean, I know there's lots of property there, so they could spread it out farther because I know on, when there's smaller properties, they gotta dig out and put pipes and stuff.
Sure, and he's not developing the whole acreage, so there's a lot of area there he can do the, uh, retention.
Okay. One other question I have for you, when you brought this to the city, was there any reason why you could not go ahead and just pave it and start driving on it as it is C2?
Well, my experience has been, you best come to the city first.
Okay.
And I know some clients that sort of just, uh, do what they please and see if the city shows up.
Right.
First down.
But, but I believe in this particular case, uh, I, you know, my client asked me, we, he wants to have a proper zoning, so he doesn't make an investment.
Right, I understand, I understand that. I just wanted to make sure we got, you guys were told.
Well, to me, um, Commissioner, I look at the property and see its condition and everything and think, what could you ever use this for?
Right. I mean, like, you're, you're, you're exactly right. I mean, I don't see any problem with what you guys are trying to do. I just couldn't figure out why you have to get I1. That's the only problem I have for you, is you wanna drive semis around and then park them someplace else, you're not gonna park them on place.
Well, I would assume that, uh, I used to observe over across 40 Highway where, from Nolan Fashion Square, they had a similar driving thing.
Mm-hmm, right.
You know, and I've, you know, that's Kansas City, and I don't know, but my first thought would have been, if I could find a surface like that and get my cones out, I can go to work.
Right.
But, you know, I, uh, came to the city first. I don't wanna.
I just, I just wanted to make sure. I appreciate it.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
You want the?
I'd like to hear from the owner.
You want the owner to come up? Would you mind coming up?
No.
Thank you. And state your name and your address, please.
Aaron Day, 9800 South 7 Highway, Lake LaGuardia.
Thank you. Do you have questions, or is there anything you want to tell us about it, or?
Well, basically what, um, John said, we just plan on putting an I slot in there so we can do some off-street driving and, uh, teaching all these maneuvers.
Okay. Did you have a question?
Yeah, my question would be, in rezoning it, just from a traffic perspective, ride-in, ride-out?
Mm-hmm.
And kind of just, if you could just tell us a little bit about how busy your business is?
Well, right now, we have two trucks. I plan on getting three, and that's probably about it. It's not gonna, we do five.
Thank you. That was the only thing in my head was, how many semis are we looking to roll around there, so?
Yeah, no, no, it's not gonna. And if, uh, you see the size of lot that I'm building, if we have three trucks up there, that's more than really what we can have sitting there at one time, per how much space you have to have to, you know, move these things around.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, um, is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? Hearing none. Commissioners, any more questions of the city before we close this case? Okay. Closing the public hearing. Commissioners, any other discussion, or I would entertain a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move that we approve case 23-100-23, rezoning at 420 South Highway, M291, from C2 to I1.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second then. Go ahead.
I'll let them decide. Get to them. All right, we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley.
Yes.
And Chairman McLean.
Yes. Continued case 23-100-23, rezoning of 420 South M291 Highway has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks for coming back. Case number 23-100-26, rezoning of 1220, 1221, 1224, 1227, 1233, North Old Mill Road, Regency Heights and former Timber Creek Ranch lots rezoning. Staff, report please.
I'm actually gonna give a presentation on bo, both cases, this case and the following case.
Okay, on the next one, that's true.
For the, um, the final plat, which is, uh, 23-320.
So you're gonna present on case 23-320-02 also?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, uh, applicant is James Pollard. The actions are to rezone, uh, property from R4, single-family residential low-density to R6, single-family residential, as well as, um, to a final plat. So we're, um, from the vicinity map you, here, you can see, this is, what you are seeing right there is, uh, Timber Creek Ranch. Um, this vicinity map doesn't actually show the, uh, portion of Regency that's to the northwest that would, um, um, be the other portion of this plat, where these, uh, two, um, subdivisions bridge each other and where that, that road crosses, uh, the property boundary. So, the, the area of the plat is in the, in the pink here. You'll notice that the way this was platted, there's portions of lots in two different subdivisions right now. And you've also got a zoning line, it's hard to tell, that's two shades of yellow. Okay. But you got a zoning line running down the middle of that. You've got R6 over on the left, on the west, and you've got R4 on the, um, on the east. So, we need a consistency for this entire, um, replat area. And so, it need to be in one subdivision or the other. So, we're, this is going to be platted into Regency Heights and adopt Regency Heights zoning. So that eastern half is gonna have to have that darker yellow zoning, okay, which is the R6. Okay? And that eastern half is this, okay? Okay. And that's the area of the rezoning. So, and then this is the, the zoning plat that the applicant provided. And of course, it is the comprehensive plan, which sees the whole area as, uh, residential uses, so. And then this is the final plat itself, so you can see the five lots there that, um, have portions of tracks and other lots, each of them that have to be pieced together into one lot and pulled into, uh, one subdivision. So, the zoning history, uh, prior to 2003, the property was owned, um, A1 Agricultural. Uh, the, um, properties included in this proposed rezoning, which is the part that is the Timber Creek Ranch there on the east, are undeveloped tracks that are currently zoned, R4, single-family residential, uh, low-density. Uh, the lots need to be rezoned, so these lots and the lots from Regency Heights can create a seamless connection between the two subdivisions. Uh, Regency Heights is zoned R6. The configuration with, uh, least setbacks would necessitate a, um, Regency Height 11th plat. There's also, would pull all of these lots into the same detention basin as well, to, to there on Regency Heights. Uh, the results will be, uh, plat with five lots, all made from, uh, tractive land, uh, from each existing subdivision. Physical characteristics of the property, the proposed five-lot plat, Regency Heights, uh, 11th plat, it's fairly flat topography, and there's some rise to it on the northwest, and it falls off there on the southwest. The right-of-way, um, with the curb and gutter running southeast to northwest, connecting the two segments of Old Mill Road in each subdivision, um, will be dedicated to the city with this plat. Of course, the, the road's already in, it's constructed, it's being driven on. Characteristics of the area, uh, to the east and south of the properties in Timber Creek Ranch, set single-family houses on R4 zone lots. Uh, the area of Timber Creek Ranch to the northeast has yet to be completed. Uh, to the west are R6, uh, zone lots of Regency Heights. Although the lots on the portion of Regency Heights adjacent to the west remain undeveloped, uh, Regency Heights is an addition that has been developing for more than a couple decades. Um, analysis, uh, consistency with the Independence for All Strategic Plan. Uh, the application is within keeping with the measures of success for improved housing conditions. Comprehensive plan guiding land use principles for the current designation. The comprehensive plan recommends, uh, residential neighborhood uses for this site. The guiding principle that, that, um, is most relevant, um, uh, state that, that needs to, um, facilitate the development of connected neighborhoods. Subarea plans, uh, this, uh, vicinity is within the Little Blue Valley, uh, subarea plan, and residential use was envisioned for this area. Um, zoning, the proposed R6, single-family, uh, residential zoning classification allows for, uh, single-family dwellings and various other uses like schools, churches, government facilities, agricultural uses. Uh, currently, the property is zoned R4, uh, single-family residential low-density, which essentially has the same uses, um, just has some setback and lot size differences. Uh, the R6 zoning is a better match, uh, considering the lot size and setbacks. Uh, historic and archaeological sites, uh, there are no apparent, uh, historic or ar, archaeological issues with this property. Uh, public utilities, all, uh, utility services are adjacent nearby. Uh, the lot needs to show though a 10-foot easement along the east side of Old Mill Road. Excuse me. As far as public improvements, no additional public improvements would be required. Uh, the street, uh, in the right-of-way to be dedicated is, like I said, has already been constructed. Uh, floodplain and, uh, stream buffer. There is not a federally designated, uh, flood zone present on the property. But there, there is a, um, not for the rezoning portion, okay? The way I wrote this was a little confusing. But on the, um, the west portion that is to be platted, uh, there is, um, a stream buffer, or the stream buffer zones, um, that will need to be indicated on the final plat. For the backyard areas of two of those lots. Environmental, uh, stormwater and, let's see. Yeah, that, there's where I, I said that there, I'm, I'm. Yeah, that, there's where I, I said that there, I'm, um, those are lots, uh, three twenty-five and three twenty-nine. Both of those lots would have to have the eighty-five-foot wide buffer, um, which will, will need a lot, which lies within both of those. There are no CIP investments that are envisioned, um, for this area. And, uh, right-of-way to be dedicated, uh, the right-of-way, uh, with curb and gutter running, uh, southeast and northwest and connecting the two segments of Old Mill Road in the subdivision will be dedicated to the city with the plat. So this is looking, I'm in Old Mill Road, looking northeast into the property. And that, this is actually a better view, looking due north, sort of, the road's running at a diagonal there. This is, um, Timber Creek Ranch to the southeast. And then this is, um, Timber Creek Ranch, a little farther where the tree line is, 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 um, Regency. This is from Regency looking due north. And you can see, uh, the, uh, the, um, platted pro- properties to the north that have yet to be developed in that plat, uh, there in Regency to the northwest. And this is looking southwest toward basically where that detention area is indicated for the Regency, uh, park. Plat. Staff recommends approval of this zoning. That's one vote that we'll need to do. The other, uh, recommendation for the other, uh, second vote is for the final plat, and there's four conditions we have for that. Uh, number one, uh, make the needed adjustment to the CCNRs for Regency Heights to recognize the expanded and additional lots, uh, using, uh, the detention basin. Number two, address lots three twenty-five, three twenty-six, three twenty-seven, three twenty-eight and three twenty-nine as twelve twenty, twelve twenty-one, twelve twenty-seven, twelve thirty-three and twelve twenty-four North Old Mill Road. Um, show, show the east, um, side public sidewalk along the right-of-way so we can continue that pattern right across into the next subdivision into, from, uh, Timber Creek Ranch into Regency. And number four, uh, the final plat, plat must fully delineate, uh, the stream buffer zones, uh, for the first-order stream that must have a eighty-five-foot wide buffer, uh, which lies in both, um, lots, uh, three twenty-five and three twenty-nine. And that's the presentation.
Thank you. Okay, commissioners, do you have any questions before we bring the applicant out? Will the applicant come forward, please? State your name and your address.
Jim Pollard, thirty thirty South Crenshaw Road, Independence, Missouri.
Thank you. Any questions? Never mind. I guess we don't have any questions.
No, I'm, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Hey Jim, I mean, I guess you're just trying to fill out these lots up, what we're trying to do, right? Make it look better?
Yeah, we're trying to clean that whole area up, because there's a little part over here belongs to this developer and the other part belongs to me and the street slate in there with, right now, isn't dedicated to the city, so we need to, you know, get the easements dedicated and split the lots up accordingly.
Okay, no problems with the recommendations of any of that?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for this case? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this case? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any more questions or discussion? This is just a cleanup and aisle, right? Okay, let's write that.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve case twenty-three, one hundred dash twenty-six rezoning.
Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. And we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley.
Yes.
And Chairman McLean.
Yes. Case number twenty-three dash one hundred dash twenty-six has been approved. Next case.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move to approve case twenty-three dash three twenty dash zero-two, final plat, Regency Heights.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, and we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley.
Yes.
And Chairman McLean.
Yes. Case number twenty-three dash three twenty dash zero-two has been approved. Thank you, and good luck. Okay, next case is, just put my head the other way, is a UDO amendment, uh, sixty-one Historic Preservation Overlay. Staff, will you give a report, please?
Yes, good evening, Planning Commission. So this is our next UDO amendment, and it is dealing with, it's really cleaning up, um, process and the procedures in regards to, um, conservation districts, historic overlay districts and landmark districts. The way that the current, um, ordinance is written is that it has multiple redundant steps, multiple public hearings, starting with, uh, the Heritage Commission makes a recommendation, Planning Commission makes a recommendation, and then on to the City Council for final adoption. All of these designations, it's not changing any land use or anything associated with that, it's, it's strictly designating a neighborhood, a property or a street as, um, historic. And so, in order to streamline that, that process, to shrink that down from three meetings to two meetings, and elevating the Heritage Commission, what we are doing is removing the Planning Commission from that step so that the Heritage Commission, uh, is doing its due diligence, holding the full public hearing, getting all of the, the feedback and making a recommendation directly to the City Council. We have looked at, at other Missouri municipalities, and there's others out there that, that handle it, uh, this way that we want to, to go to. Some of the other changes that we are making to this, um, ordinance amendment is standardizing the process for each one of these. So we have the Conservation District, the Historic Overlay District and the Historic Landmark District. Each one of those three has three different, um, procedures for how to go about that. It's even talking about sending out certified mail in some cases, so we're really cleaning up all of those, so all three of those are standardized and, uh, streamlining the process. This did go to the Heritage Commission earlier this month, and the Heritage Commission did recommend approval of, of this, and, uh, staff recommends approval as, as well, and, um, available for any questions.
So, what, I guess my concern is, can you, uh, tell me why it's not a land or a zoning situation? Isn't it a zoning situation, uh, overlay, isn't it overlay zoning?
It is, but it, it's only in the historic overlay, so you are, uh, take for example, the, uh, Truman District. That is our, our one historic overlay district. And in that case, uh, it was strictly looking at, should that area be a historic district? None of the, uh, making that determination does not change the, the land use. Yeah, it's not changing the zoning, single-family is still, still there, it's just de- designating that as a historic district. And it goes back to many years ago to, uh, when the city first, uh, became a certified local government and how they decided to treat their historic districts, and they called them historic overlay districts.
So we're only talking about historic overlays?
It's conservation.
Conservation too, yeah.
Historic overlay and historic landmark.
Okay. So it's not the same as, like, the Inglewood overlay that happened before?
Correct, those, those other overlay districts, uh, and there are several in the UDO. All of those are, um, do not have to go to the Heritage Commission. That is strictly a, uh, function of the Planning Commission making their recommendation to the, to the City Council. That is actually, and, and could potentially change the, the land use. These historic districts are not changing the underlying use or land use.
Okay. I just wanted some clarification on that.
Your mic's not on, I don't like it.
Oh, great. Sorry.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Tom, who brought this up for you guys to consider? Was, how'd that come about?
So after we went through the nomination process for the Silver Heart Inn, that's when we got to thinking going, this is an extremely long process. By making this change, we would probably shave off two months from that designation process. But that's what really prompted it, was after the Silver Heart Inn went through, uh, that, going from Heritage Commission, Planning Commission to City Council, it was a really long process.
Uh, my next question is going to be, so is the Heritage Commission, is that televised, or is that just strictly a meeting that's?
The Heritage Commission is not te- televised.
And so, my next question's going to be then, how is this, how would people know that things were happening like this without being like at the command, Planning Commission so they could talk about it and go forth? I mean, if somebody just goes Heritage Commission, that's probably not out there for people to see all the time, like the Planning Commission's out there.
So, uh, these, they are, so the Heritage Commission holds a full public hearing. And as part of that, there's notices that go out to the surrounding property owners.
So it's got around the surrounding property, I just mean the whole city, though. I mean, like, this is televised for the whole city to see, where the Heritage Commission, it's not televised for everybody to see. So, I mean, a lot of people probably watch this stuff online or go back and forth and like, fast-forward it through it, see what's happening. I just don't think it's a good idea taking it off the Planning Commission. That way, people can see what's happening, if they agree or disagree, and then they can come up before the City Council before it goes there. If it goes to the Heritage, they don't see it, they don't know what's happening, next thing they know, it's on the City Council, and it could be on the consent agenda and goes flying right on through.
So, uh, when, when it reaches the City Council, that, that is not cha- changing. That's still going to be the public hearing, and it, and the council must adopt it by, by ordinance which has the, the two readings.
So it is a public hearing at the City Council?
Correct, yes.
That's, that's one thing I'm worried about, because I, I know if we take it out this one, is it still going to be a public hearing there?
So you can see, yes, so, so the current process, there's three public hearings.
Okay, so there is three, okay, that's, okay, I can see that being redundant now. I mean, I don't mind that being redundant, I'm just, just wondering how people are going to know about, that's the problem I see.
Good question.
I agree, that was my concern.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Tom, can you tell me or give me an example of a conservation issue?
We don't have one.
Okay, have we had one in the last decade?
So, when we were doing the research for this, um, Wendy, our Historic Preservation Manager, was scratching her head because that was the, that language required the most revision because it obviously came later than the Historic Overlay District and Historic Landmark District, and it was adopted, do you happen to know when it was adopted? It was adopted sometime later, and it wasn't standardized, and we do not have any of those, or, um, we're not exactly sure how it got into the, the ordinance, however, it's important, important enough, we still need to keep it in the UDO.
If I may, I can explain on that.
Well, can you, I have a specific question then, can you tell me if we haven't dealt with it, why it would need to be moved?
Sure. So, um, again, my name is Wendy Shea, I'm the Historic Preservation Manager for the city, I'm also the liaison to the Independence Heritage Commission. So, um, the intent behind conservation districts are to protect areas that have a lower level of historic integrity, but that we would still want, for instance, streetscape features or other built features that are part of a neighborhood to be protected. And that can include a historic tree canopy, that can include retaining walls, that can include, um, for instance, we looked at Golden Acres at one point for a conservation district. That was our first planned subdivision in Independence. Some of the buildings have been changed to the point that they would not be at a high enough level for consideration as a historic designation, but they would be, um, something that the neighborhood itself would like to protect, um, collectively, and so we would look at that as a conservation district. In lieu of something like an HOA.
I'm having trouble trying to understand how that would fit.
It is a different conservation district.
You don't have to feed them as much, or maybe you do.
So you would still adopt design guidelines, the same way that we've adopted design guidelines for our historic district, but the neighborhood would allow staff to create those guidelines to protect what the neighborhood collectively wanted to see, um, either reviewed before the Heritage Commission or looked at administratively in order to protect those historic, well, historic, um, features in that conservation district. So it's a little bit confusing, but the gist of it is, is that just doesn't have that high level of historic integrity that, like, for instance, our Truman District does. And so you would just recognize it for its other attributes, and again, that would be driven by the community that's there.
And we have none of those at this time?
We do not. Since I started in two thousand and four, we have not added any additional historic districts, we have added individual landmarks, and that's part of this request to streamline the process.
My pointed question would be, you mentioned Golden Acres, so is there plans to make Golden Acres a conservation area?
They were approached, um, and actually, I lived in that neighborhood when they were approached, and, um, we gave them several public presentations, and ultimately, they decided that they did not want a conservation district established there. I've since talked to someone in the last year or two who would like to get those conversations started again. And if that's something that the neighborhood would like to see, then I'm more than willing to work with them on the establishment of a new district.
So can you give me a little more information about, so the request for a conservation area comes from the people who live in the area requesting it?
So the Historic Preservation Division, um, in two thousand and nineteen worked on a new Historic Preservation Master Plan. In that master plan, there were ten or eleven areas that were identified as being either eligible for a historic, local historic district or for a conservation district. So that's already been identified by staff, s- I'm a staff of one, I can always, um, contact the neighborhood, see if they're interested in taking that additional step, but otherwise, we, we've in the past had people in the neighborhood reach out to us.
Maybe this question more for you, Tom. Can you give me like a big picture overview? I guess I have a concern of dividing citizens versus uniting citizens by taking some of this away from the Planning Commission. I'm happy to give up, you know, things we don't need to vote on and things that are redundant. But my concern is really that public piece and dividing out parcels of our city that, quote, could be seen or deemed as more important than others. Can you kind of give me a big overview that that's not the case? Am I thinking?
No.
Anybody else thinking down that same road?
That's exactly what I said, that's what I'm saying, I mean, I don't know.
The designation process just strictly recognizes that property for its either, um, historical or architectural significance, and that's something that, um, probably half of Independence at this point could be designated. But, you know, one of the bigger issues with this designation process is that when we have the Planning Commission involved, to the neighbors especially, it looks like it's a zoning change, and they're particularly concerned about how that's going to affect their property. Because the zoning might be our- Because the zoning might be R six, and this will literally make it a dash H L. For instance, the Silver Heart Inn, it just literally put that overlay as that H L. The neighbors surrounding them were concerned about, what does that mean? Are you changing setbacks? Are you changing lot coverage? And part of the intent of this was really to help clarify that process to the public so that they understand this is strictly for that specific parcel or for that specific district, and it does not affect the use, any of the zoning regulations or requirements for any other surrounding properties or that particular property. Only requires that a design review be done if they're making significant exterior changes.
So if a property that wanted to be historically designated also did include a zoning change, would it then come to the planning commission?
It absolutely would, yes. It is a completely separate process. This is just strictly regulating design review requirements, and that's it. And that can be done either at the administrative level or it can be done at the Heritage Commission level.
All right, that explains better, thank you.
So I could see the historic overlay shortening that process if it didn't include design change. It's the conservation one that doesn't make sense to me because that is a land use situation. It is, right? I mean, it's just, it sounds different to me.
It's exactly the same thing, only for instance, in like the Truman District, you might see that we're going to look at historic wood windows, we're going to look at historic siding, we're going to look at open front porches. In a conservation district, the level of review and the level of integrity is a little bit lower. So they're going to be looking at things like property owner wants to take out a retaining wall. That area is known for those historic stone retaining walls. The neighborhood collectively wanted to protect that, and so they established a conservation district. So it's just design guidelines that are dictated by the people who live there.
But when that happens, then you're going to get neighbors mad at each other because they won't be able to take out the wall to put up a better wall that they think looks better.
But the neighborhood would.
Because it just works when it's falling down.
The neighborhood would collectively have to agree on establishing the district. There's a percentage threshold that they would have to meet.
Well, I understand that, yeah. But it sounds like to me it still probably needs to come to the planning commission because you're putting a regulation on that area, and then you're saying just the heritage one's going to do the, say okay before it goes to city council.
But it's not a zoning regulation, so it.
It sounds like it is zoning, but you're saying they can't tear down that wall. That's what it sounds like to me.
So it's more of the design aspects of, you know, we have, people are most familiar with historic homes, the architecture.
Right, historic, yeah, that's why we're saying historic's okay, but when you get to this conservation, it's really throwing worms in there so it can go anywhere it wants to go.
But within the historic realm, there's a variety of different things, from walls, other structures, other design elements. And as Wendy was talking about, there's the three different levels. The conservation is, I'll call it the low hanging fruit for areas to, who want to be considered historic, that's the low hanging fruit. Then you have the actual district, and then you have the historic landmarks, which are the exemplary historic treasures that the city has.
So please do not take this wrong. I think you're wonderful. I think what concerns me is the public portion. Because when I first read that, this initially, I thought, oh, this is a no brainer. However, the more I think about it, what concerns me is we, we're a department of one. So the checks and balances, I just don't, I can't get past that checks and balances thing. I know that there is a Heritage Commission, I know there's people on the Heritage Commission, I get that. Something feels like it's missing, and I don't know what that is exactly, other than it's that public portion. I don't know, it just, something doesn't feel right. I can't.
So the Heritage Commission meetings, just for clarification, they are posted in City Hall. They're posted online, the meeting minutes are posted online. And then we also would put a notification in the examiner.
I know, but the average person doesn't pay attention to it until it's like already happened, and then it just happens.
And then, correct me if I'm wrong, but then they would have an opportunity to participate at the council level as well?
So at both?
Yes, they would.
Heritage Commission and council level, correct?
And they are all public meetings, and we have them in the council chambers when we have Heritage Commission meetings.
What time is that at usually?
It's at six o'clock on the first Tuesday of the month.
Chairman McLean?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, is it Wendy?
Wendy.
Wendy, you had mentioned as an example, streetscape. If we went back three years and the square streetscape came up under the new, this new plan, how would it have been differently progressed through the commission system?
The proposed square streetscape plan, the current one? If a conservation district was established there and those design guidelines dictated what they wanted to see protected and what they didn't, they would still go through the same process that any even individual property owner would go through at the Heritage Commission level. So they'd put in a request if they wanted to make a change to it. They would explain the reasoning why, they would explain if they wanted to appeal via an economic hardship process. And they may very well be able to make alterations to it. It just wouldn't affect any of the zoning requirements that are underlying in that area. So they have an opportunity the same way they do if you own a historic house, you want to put, you know, fiberglass windows in instead of the wood windows that you have. You have all your data that shows why you can justify it. You maybe have a neighbor who has the same thing, and you would just present that the same way you would via the historic district. You would present that to the Heritage Commission, and they would make that determination.
So Tom, back to you. There was quite a robust, robust advertisement, community conversations, forums, et cetera, about, I'm just used to the square streetscape since you mentioned streetscape. So if it was to become a conservation area, et cetera, would that whole period of gaining public comments and having those robust, you know, informational times, would that have all looked the same? Or would it look less? Would it be less under the Heritage Commission? I just want your honest opinion.
It would still be the same. So our municipal services department utilizes that same process for all of their capital projects. Obviously, the square streetscape had a lot more people, just because of what it is. But they utilize that same process for almost all of their capital projects and have for a number of years. They just maybe don't rise to the level that the square streetscape does.
I'm just trying to understand this really well, so let me give you one more example. The beautiful murals on the side of the historic buildings on the square. Under a conservation area, would those have been allowed? Because they are a design element.
So the, so the, so the square is currently within a national historic district. And same, same process.
I think we all want to make things better, we just don't want to make a ruling that limits us in the future.
Good questions.
Yeah, I think that's the, the question is, is it debilitating in, easier in one way and debilitating in another way? Because that does happen even with the historic overlay. It can be debilitating, it's great, but it can be debilitating and cost prohibitive in a whole nother way. So.
I don't know, any other questions?
Do we need three, do we need three public hearings, I guess? Is that really what we need, right?
Well, my opinion is if you have three public hearings, then you have more people hearing what's happening than just two. Because more people listen in different spots.
You're right.
So the word would get out more, so I don't see any problem with three. Even if it's something for historic or like this, everybody should be able to hear about it. So I think it still should go through all three phases. I mean, if it's that important, what's another month?
Okay, any more questions of Wendy?
No, thank you, Wendy. You're welcome.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? Hearing none, do we have any more questions of staff? Or are we ready to close the public portion? Closing the public portion of this case, commissioners, any more discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Make a motion for case 23-175-07, U D O amendment number 61.
Is there a second?
I second.
Sorry. No, sorry. I was also like, okay.
I was thinking.
I was too.
Me too. And we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson?
No.
Commissioner Nesbit?
No.
Commissioner H Wiley?
No.
Commissioner L Wiley?
No.
Chairman McLean?
No, I have the same hesitation. So case number 23-175-07 has not been approved. I don't know.
He'll go to city council.
That's true. Okay. Roundtable, do you, the city, do you have anything for us?
Well, I will share that Brian has been promoted to senior planner. As of yesterday.
Forgive us for not noticing your new plaque.
Oh my gosh, I couldn't read it.
I didn't notice it, sorry.
Nice, congratulations.
Congrats, Brian.
Well earned.
And for those of you who don't know, Commissioner Preston has submitted his resignation. So it's sad to see him leave. We will have a plaque made for him and given to him. So as soon as we have that done, we will get that done, and then we'll work with the council to get our two vacancies filled, hopefully, hopefully soon. Because we do need four of you to have a quorum, so.
Right.
Hopefully, we will get that as soon as the council can make a recommendation.
Thank you. And we appreciate so much Commissioner Preston's time that he gave to this commission. I know it's a volunteer job, obviously, and we really, really appreciate all the hard work he put in over these last.
Eight years, eight years.
So we wish him great new adventures. So thank you.
Commissioner, can I ask one question?
Yes.
Things I don't know, I'm just going to ask.
Go.
Is it appropriate to, is it appropriate for me to ask Tom Skinnell while he's here? If, when we were in the middle of just talking, would it ever be inappropriate, I guess maybe is the better answer, to ask for a city employee's opinion?
Counselor?
Well, for example, let's just go back to what we just talked about, and just the, just the necessity.
I see where she's coming from, because last session, somebody gave their opinion, and we got, I mean, we had a timeout on it, so I don't know whatever happened in the back room, but that's where she's coming from. So she'd like to know if that's something we're not supposed to say.
Or ask for.
Ask for.
Because many times I'll go, I don't get why we're discussing that. I'd like to ask, why are we discussing this in your opinion, Tom? You know, that kind of thing. And I really wanted to know when it would be appropriate to ask for the city employee.
Well, it's an interesting question to ask me because I get paid for my opinions. I'm supposed to give you my opinion.
So if I gave you a court right now?
I don't see anything. Keep in mind that the employee, the city employee may not feel that they can respond in the way that they truly feel for a variety of reasons, and that may be your answer. And I would hope that nobody would hold that against a city employee if they said that, I do have, I'd say for example, you ask an opinion of Brian, and he says, well, I have an opinion on that, but the city in general is for this plan. So, and then I would hope that, and I would say this to not just the Planning and Zoning Commission, but Board of Adjustments or anybody else, that I would hope that you would accept that answer and understand that, let's not push this individual on.
Absolutely.
But as far as asking for it, no, I don't think there's a problem with that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Meeting is adjourned at 7:07.